I'd call to order the county commission regular session for October sixteenth, Commissioner Williams and lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Or we just thank you for all the men and women that work and volunteer for this county. We ask that you keep them safe. Lord, go with us tonight and be with us. Forgive us of our sins. In his name we pray.
Amen.
One thing.
A place to the way the United States of America and to the republic where it's a sentence, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Ben Clark, roll close.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins, Mr. Ledger, Mr. McElwain, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Spicer, Mr. Buckner, Mr. Britt, Mr. Petey, Mr. Williams, Mr. Grove, Ms. Gray.
We do have a quorum here tonight. Mr. Petey is returning from Europe. What must be like to be an insurance agent? I want to find out one day. You know, serious note, Mr. Dawson was under the weather and it looks like Cindy said he might be being checked into the VA hospital. So keep your, keep him in your thoughts and prayers and Jody, we talked to you personally, but want to extend our condolences for your loss of your mother. Keep all of y'all in our prayers. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the September eighteenth of regular session up on floor from motion by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item is public comments. Anyone from the public wish to make a comment. Seeing no one, the next item is committee reports. Any committees to report? Next item is resolutions, financial, financial quarter reports, all funds at set of school, Mr. Hall.
Mayor, we reported on these two weeks ago. In summary, it was just that each fund was pretty healthy looking. They had all increased their fund balances. That's basically the analysis that I reported on. So I don't have any other items to bring up on the quarterly reports. They're ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, fourth quarter.
Any question, Mr. Hall? Open the floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any other questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is budget amendments, all school funds. Dr. Weeks, we had you at order, Mr. Hall. Sorry. We will plan better next time.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. We shared the information for the budget amendment from our fund balance with you at the last meeting, and thank you for sending that on to this evening. Did want to clarify one piece of information. I think that question that came up last month was there was a question about the designated and undesignated fund balances. And again, these are based on the end of our twenty-two fiscal year fund balance that was thirty-three point one million dollars. And so as of, of that fund balance, eighteen point three million of that was undesignedated. And fourteen point eight of that was designated. So I think some of the question came from what, what were those funds? How were they designated? What's the process for doing that? So I mentioned three out of the six of these things. So I think, I think just to add to that conversation from last, last time. Our daycares that we run to take care of students before and after school, there is a designation that, that that money is all set aside. So that really operates, even though it's under the schools funds, it really operates as an individual business. And so the funds that they take in for daycare match and cover the expenses that are set aside for daycare. And when they, they use those funds to designate for improvements to the program such as they buy more computers, more supplies, more books, they help take care of our playgrounds and things like that. So part of that designated fund balance is set aside for daycares. We had talked about the set asides that the board designated a portion of a, a large donation that we received. A couple of years ago, they designated a large portion of that to be taken care of there. Parts that I did mention was there are encumbrances that are, that are held in that designated fund balance. And then the other side that's set aside for education deals with teacher retirement so that, that we have to set aside a portion that matches what's required by teacher retirement and that we're required by law to hold that in a designated fund balance. So those were the parts of the fund balance that had specific designations that were either created by the board itself or created by statute that, that makes those designations be a required requirement of the law. So I think, I hope that answered any questions you might have had regarding those. And so again, we come back asking for the, the transfer of funds from, from our fund balance to transfer into capital outlay to take care of the projects, the majority of those projects that we presented and shared with you at last meeting. If you need a copy of that, I still have copies of that if anybody needs updated copies.
Yeah, I need a copy. There's a couple of things I want to look at. And I wanted to ask the mayor about the fund balance option. And what y'all have come up with, if you and Mr. Hall, y'all discussed it.
Be glad to, and I apologize, Dr. Weeks. I was going to push this to the end, but, but we've already started. I got a bunch of paper to hand out to, to answer some of the questions I've been asked. So
Got a lot of paper.
It's a whole bunch. There's a rainforest that's shut down now and I feel really bad about it.
Yes, sir.
And Dr. Weeks, while Mayor is working here, and you're, you're asking us to, what you're asking us to do is approve eight million, eighty-eight thousand dollars tonight, right? To swap everything over, what y'all wanting to do?
You get three pages, so.
So if we approve this, if we approve this fund budget move, move over tonight, everything on this list will be done. Your artificial turf, the football fields, the baseball fields, or whatever, the new lighting report repairs, the roof, the sidewalk, all this, right?
You're, you're actually giving us the, the dollars and allocating the dollars for capital outlay projects. So each of these projects would, would then be put out to bid. And I shared with board members this evening, we had a meeting at four thirty this evening. So anything that's on this list that is exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars would be bid out. And the board would approve or disprove of those bids that come in. So the first couple of bids that we would work on would be some painting that we'd like to try to get taken care of on the outside of some buildings. Dixon County High School, Dixon Middle had some painting projects that are going to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. So we would work on taking care of those. We've talked about athletic field lighting. And again, these are, these are budget estimates that we've put together. So those, those again would be bid and approved by the Board of Education as, as they came up, as they became available, as they became, as they were bid and as bids come in. So, so yes, to your question, is, is the money is designated for these projects and no other projects that have been set aside, but given with these being budgetary numbers, you know, some of the numbers may come in and not be realistic and we may not be able to do some of those projects.
Right. And I like to, I like to, the only problem I have with this is the in-progress work. This commission's only job is to set y'all a budget. And to make sure y'all follow it is oversight. So I, I kind of got a problem when y'all go ahead and do the work, bid it out, start it out, then you ask us to refund your fund, your budget, because we've already passed a budget in July, which would give, print that money back in there, then y'all could spend it on whatever you want again. So that, that kind of just bypasses the commission in, in my opinion, and I might want somebody else's opinion on it. But that's kind of a way I, I don't, I don't like that. And I don't, I, I believe that we're here for a reason, for oversight and to make sure that the, the, the funds are moved right. And that when y'all do that and we just lump sum, print the money back in y'all's budget, that takes the control out of our hands again, and that kind of takes our oversight away. So I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it, but going forward, I'm, I'm pretty much against that. And I, I want it known and I'm against it.
And I, I certainly understand and I, I very much respect that opinion. And you know, if, if the commission says, you know, we, we'd like to take those dollars out of the, out of the request, you know, we're, we're prepared, we're prepared for that certainly.
Yes.
And the other night I, I wasn't, I guess, paying attention. I was reading when Mr. Groves was asking that question. Those in-progress things, were they budgeted?
Yes, sir.
So they are, I, I guess I've never seen that before when a budgeted item is being asked to be put back in. I guess I haven't seen that before. And I've still got a, a lot of questions about some stuff. And like I said, I've asked about that roof. I've asked, you know, the insurance money on the roof. You know, I've, I've got some questions. I'd like to see this put off a month. I've got some questions. I'd like to make a motion to have this put off a month. And let's look at this. I've got some questions still. I, I'm just really not for, I, I don't know. I, I've got, I'd like to hear what Bob's got to say that give us some time to, to look at this. My motion would be to put this off a month. Let's, let's look at what Bob's got to say and then revisit this next month. And, and see. Oh, like I said, this, to me, the most important thing on here that should have been done first was that Creekwood roof. And it has been pushed back to me, the, one of the last things. It's been leaking for two years and it, you know, I've that's, that boggles my mind. That has, that's been the last thing. It's been to be fixed. So
I'm prepared to second that motion, but I'd like to hear what the mayor has to say, him and Don's come up with on the, on the paperwork that he's given us.
Thank you. That's a proper motion and a second. We don't, we can have discussion on that, keep that open. This motion is to move this to the next session for thirty, in thirty days from now, the next regular session. I did get y'all right on that. Okay. Any more discussion or questions? Yes, Commissioner Simkins.
Preso that it would be bid out. He said that just.
We bid twenty-five thousand.
Is that? Do you think that needs to be less? Do you think that?
I actually, state law allows us to go up to fifty thousand.
Okay.
It, it had been less until about three years ago, the state legislature recognized that they did raise that bid limit and.
I don't have a problem with it. I was just wondering how that figure came about.
Our, our board policy is twenty-five thousand. State law allows if the board so designates, they can bid, they can raise that bid threshold limit to actually to fifty if they wish to do so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I wasn't here for the work session. On, on the list, I know about the artificial turf. Is that, is that being pushed more from an, from administrative level because it could be multi-use? Or is that? I guess I'm asking this, is, are the, I guess, the athletic directors and coaches, is everybody for this? I just know there's, I'm here this pushback from the NFL that there's more injuries and all this stuff. So I was kind of wondering if this was like administrated led thing or if, like all the sports teams are for this.
I think it was a Dr. Weeks led thing to start off with. We, we've explored that idea for going on two years. We have talked with all athletic directors at both middle and high school levels, talked with our two high school principals because these would be on their two campuses. We'd actually completed a comparison study of the districts which surround us and all the districts which have athletic turf fields. And we're quite behind. I think the mayor did express support and, and positivity toward completing that because again, that's going to make us similar to districts both that we compete with as well as that's, that's just where everybody's heading. Yes, it is benefit. It's not just, you know, some people say you're getting a turf football field. You're not, you're, you're getting a turf athletic field which is used you know, by multi, multiple sports. It's used by the community. It's it provides better usage, you know, when you, when you talk about weathering and things like that, you don't have to be as concerned about, you know, using the turf and waiting for it to dry out and things of, of a grass nature that you would. You don't get that overuse of the end of the season. Some of our grass fields are looking pretty rough right now, but it can be used year round. Used by band, used by our junior pro programs, used by our middle school programs, and it really completes that maintenance project on those campuses. And that, that's I, I guess the idea originated through my office. We, we explored that through coaches at both of our high schools, one hundred percent support of that. And so, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mayor, I don't know. Are we on something else? Or are you on something? Does this need to go to a vote now? Do we need to keep discussing?
Discussion going because it's all, everything we're discussing is your main to the motion about the fund balance and any comments I'll be given will it's going to be more global or get to the fund balance.
Right. Like I said, I don't have no problem with anything that y'all have done besides the lack of the oversight. And I, I don't think that's a, a way to get away from it. The other thing that I think, and I hated that y'all canceled, the only that got canceled tonight was the joint work session is, is that I, I believe we need to think outside. We need to really, the school board really needs to work with Don Hall and the mayor to figure out how we're going to pay for these projects coming up. And that's why I think y'all's fund balance and our debt reserves, two different things, that, that, that we're going to have to come up with a project for four, five, ten years down the road because we got other projects coming up and our balance is only so much that we can borrow. So I guess what I'm saying is before y'all just start spending money on everything, don't take it for example, that we're going to vote to approve to spend thirty something million on building new Charlotte Middle School, because I know I've talked with the mayor and some other people, there's other projects that's going to be coming about in the next three, four, five years. The jail project's going to have to be expanded, which is going to be millions that, that we're either going to have to pay for now or figure out how to pay for now or raise taxes. And I don't believe nobody on this committee is, is preparing to raise taxes in the next three to four years. So I think that's a big discussion that, that everybody needs to have.
I, I would agree, Commissioner Grove. I think that is important. I think the school board has been working with the intent. And then again, I, I don't know what kind of documents you're looking at now. So perform a document, but you know, I, I think five years ago, we were, we were at least informed that would be the next time dollars would be available for the school system. And the number thirty, thirty-ish million has been tossed around for that five-year period. And, and the board has been looking at a long-range facility plan for that five-year period because that, that started as soon as the Burns Middle School was completed and.
And I understand it, but I think the school board has got in their head that that's their thirty-two million. That's our county's thirty-two million. We got other projects that's going on that, that we're going to have to pay for too, that might have to borrow money too. So the misconception of the thirty-two million dollars that we can borrow right now is all school money. I think it's probably misconstrued. Does that make sense? Because we're, we're looking at other projects that we're going, that we're just not the school. We got everything. I'm sure Sheriff Eads is over thinking, yeah, I got things I need to. Or, or the highway department's got things they're going to need too that's coming up.
And, and I would, I would respond to that too. You know, right now we've been very, very blessed not to experience a lot of growth in terms of student growth. The right farm sold or the right subdivision opened or the right exit open on interstate, you know, the, I would say the same thing back there. Instead of a thirty million dollar improvement to one school that it made, it may be, you know, they made it a new elementary school. They may need two new elementary schools. Just depends on the growth that occurs. And I, I concur with that completely. Somebody would, somebody would.
You know, the question of Dr. Weeks. Dr. Weeks, I give you a copy of, of, I gave everybody else one. I'm sorry. You were, you were talking. Commissioner Grove asked me a question, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before. And I told him it was a very good question mainly because it was, but my answer was it was a lot of different variables that came into the question, what should a school's fund balance be? So you can, you can look at different things. Now, what I've given y'all is a debt service budget. Let me, I'll walk through that in just a second. When I was elected, C Task had done a study for the previous mayor estimating growth in the county as far as the assessed value. At that time, the assessed value of all taxable properties was nine hundred and sixty-six million dollars. They estimated by this time, we're using a one point five percent growth factor that all the property in Dixon County would be rough, roughly worth one point two million dollars. We know that when this, we close out this year, that the assessed value is still being one point two billion. I think I said million. One point two billion is going to be about one point six billion. So if you back that percentage in, our growth has exceeded the one and a half percent to a point of about three point six six percent. That is a good historic number because you're taking that during the great recession of nine, ten, eleven. It probably went until twelve or thirteen that we started seeing property values bounce back. But of Property values bounced back. But of course, in the last, uh, three years or so, we've seen enormous jumps. So if you average it out. You would three, think three-point-six is a reasonable number. Um. From that though, uh, that's more aggressive than I'd want to be. All of the, uh, uh. Judgments that we used about having money to, available to bar for the schools. We always presented a worst-case scenario, always knowing there was a better case scenario. But, uh, on this first page, you'll see, uh, that is, and, and remember, we're going right to left on this. The last, uh, audit was what shows that's the actual twenty-two. Those were actual numbers in debt service. If you followed those across, uh, we estimated a figure this year, three-point-eight million, uh, with the budget we did. But on this, uh, growth on page one, we used a two percent growth fig- figure on here. Uh, and I have working copy on this because these are me and my formulas. Don Hall has not checked it. I'm just a. Regular mayor. He's a CPA, so he's a smart guy in here. But we took that figure out. And carried it in, out to two thousand thirty-five. It works past fiscal year two thousand thirty-five. But what I want you to drop down. In the middle of this, where it has possible new projects, uh, you'll see there's third, two thirty-two and a half million dollar projects. Uh, at the rate that we were borrowing money at one-point-nine percent, we had this in at two-and-a-half percent. So it states that we could, with this number, start a project in fiscal year twenty-five. Where you see the first two years, uh, under two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six are smaller numbers. That's because we're paying interest only while the construction's done. But the amateurized payment on that was two, almost two-point-one million dollars a year to borrow that money. Then you see above it, another thirty new half million dollars that could be done in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Always use the figure, I think thirty-one or thirty-two because I wanted to be that conservative guy, but we thought we could be none earlier. But that's where we are. If you go down to the bottom above the years, you see the percentages where on. The last budget, we were a hundred and sixty-five percent, uh. Loan balance, uh, versus actual expenditures, but we knew we were having these debts come up. So you follow that one sixty-five across. It starts depleting itself when those new debts come on. But when you get over into years, uh, two thousand thirty-three and thirty-four, thirty, uh, thirty-five. It le- levels itself out. So what it's telling you is that those debts at that rate. Could be paid without us having to put more money into debt service. But. Page one doesn't work anymore because there's a thing called inflation. Uh. You go to page two, it's the, using the very same formulas on this, but, oh. The reality is that if we borrowed money today, our best-case scenario is five percent. So a two-point-one million dollar payment. That we had on thirty-two million is now two-point-six million dollars a year. So. It's costing us because the cost of interest is going at five-hundred-thousand dollars a year. So you multiply that out. It starts a negative effect on that. But. What I've done is on this one. I showed that we do a thirty-two and a half million dollar borrowing next year and it works. On this scenario. And then in the years two thousand thirty-one, thirty, thirty-one, we're in a position to come back and borrow. A sixteen-and-a-half million dollars at that point in time without raising taxes. Which carries you onto page three now. Page three is the same thing, except I put the debt. The smaller debt, the sixteen-point-two million, show us start paying that next year, uh, in twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. But what, by taking on that smaller debt, it means we can start as early as twenty-seven and twenty-eight to do a thirty-two-and-a-half million dollar borrowing without raising taxes. So I know, I think I know where everyone thinks I'm headed. The school's fund balance belongs to the school. We cannot dictate what we do on that. We take care of the borrowing for the schools. But, uh, we started off with project cooperation about eleven years ago, I believe. And, uh, and again, we want to get the schools input on this, but project collaboration will be the new one and it appears. That if we borrow sixteen-point-two million and collaborate the schools to get their projects done. We can do that and take on another thirty-two million dollar project a lot sooner. Hoping the interest rates go down, but using the, the five percent that we can borrow at right now. Uh, you asked the question about what fund balance should be. Uh, that's going to be more of opinion than fact because. The minimum required, uh, by state is at three percent of your expenses and I can't do it with my shoes on, but that's probably around three million. Dollars more or less. Uh, looking at the, the school's cash situation. Uh, looking at historical expenses and there, this is a working copy and I, I may change my answer in two weeks. But me looking at their budget, I would be comfortable if they had fifteen percent fund balance, which I think would be about thirteen-point-two million dollars. Uh, what they ought to leave remaining in their fund balance, in my opinion, from our financial deal, which would allow. If they, uh, in my opinion, they would have the money above that to spend on any project they'd like. It would put us in a position where we could borrow less money now at the high interest rate and not. Take on a huge debt with high rates and wait on the rates to hopefully to correct themselves in the next few years. But I didn't bank on that. Uh, I use that five percent rate on that in perpetuity. Uh. As we talked about many times, it's brought up tonight. There are other projects that are going to come up that need to be done. Uh, I tried to keep the cash flow steady on all these, but if you look at the bottom line. We're a little bit overfunded in debt service, but we're frankly, where we could get down as low as twenty percent. But we don't know what's coming up. We do know the sheriff and I've talked about jail expansion. There may be something that I'm not aware of. We've tried to take care of the last thirteen years, all the building, writing things here as much as we can, but there could be something unexpected. So we need to leave some cushion in case we need to do something, but it's not. It's not going to be a huge amount available, but there will be money available that we could put. Put that more debt in here to take care of some of our needs. Again, this is a working copy. Uh, it needs a lot more massaging, but I promise you I'd give you an answer tonight. Uh, so my short answer is. Uh, if you ask me to be the, the decision maker tonight, I would say that we need to. Ask the schools if they would consider spending their fund balance, anything above the fifteen percent level. And that we borrow the sixteen-point-two-five million, if we can fit that to all their project list. I know for, there's some concerns from some of y'all about how the school bids and their process on that. And that's something you might want to let Dr. Weeks and the members of the school board. Know about tonight while they're here, if you have any other questions or concerns, but. Again, I've talked a lot. I'm wide open for questions because I know that's a lot of numbers on there and I condensed it to about. A quarter the size the actual document is. I'd be glad to walk through any numbers or answer any questions y'all may have. Yes, sir.
Well, and that's just why I want to put this off. Oh. Uh, uh, this is just my thinking. And this may ruffle some feathers. But we're not going to have Dr. Weeks. So this is pretty much for the school board. This eight million dollars. I think we go back to the drawing board for the whole shebang. My understanding, we have thirty-eight million dollars for a new, now for the new Charlotte school. My, the last number I got was twenty-five million. You know, th- there's no way we can do thirty-eight million dollars. Probably what, no way we can do twenty-five. So, you know, with this sixteen, I know we've got some things coming up. With a, y'all having a thirty-three million dollars, uh, fund balance. I'd like to see the schools spend about ten to fifteen million of y'all's fund balance to put with. Maybe sixteen that we can do and that's thirty. We're going to probably have to drop back and punt, do some different stuff with Charlotte Middle. I don't know what. We may not be able to turf football fields. We may not be able to put lights. We may not be able to do. A bunch of stuff. Um. I, I don't know what, you know, like I said, maybe we. Start over with the planning. Or whatever. But we're not going to be able to just blow thirty-three million dollars worth of fund balance to just. Do whatever. Um, you know, if Dr. Weeks was still here and we were still just doing. I might go along with it, but the ballgame has changed. It's, it's changed with me. The school board has changed. We've got a new chairman. So it, it, you know, it's changed with me. So do we start all over? I guess. We start up with the, you know, we erase the chalkboard and we start all over. And, um. It just, it is what it is. And, and like I said, yep, I, I want some of that fund balance. I want a lot of it. And, um. It just, like I said. I'm not for, uh, I'm not for raising taxes and taking our money and. Blowing the thirty-three for, you know, uh, heck yeah, I'd love to have turf. I'd love to have new lights. I'd love to have. But like I said, the game changed. Um. So the school board thought it was best to do what they did, so. We thought it's go, it's going to be best to, we're going, we're going to change our rules. And, uh. So. Uh. To me, this eight million dollars is off the table. Um. That gym roof needs to be fixed. You know, to me, I'd have my maintenance man up there putting some. Sealant, some tires, some whatever. Whatever it's got to be done. I, I don't know why that hadn't already been done. Um, because you fixing to buy a new gym floor if it's not. Uh, I, I don't know why that's not been a maintenance issue. But, um. There's no reason why we should be spending thirty-two million. And the school board holding on to thirty-three million. Um. It was all, we was rolling pretty good as long as we had a superintendent of the year. And then how far we got rid of him. Somebody explain that to me. So. My thing is. The school board needs to. Spend fifteen and we spend fifteen and we'll build some schools and. We'll take care of what we need to take care of and. Then on down the road, we can spend. Thirty more. That's just my opinion. We got twelve members on here, eleven, the eleven can do what they think, but that's my opinion.
Like Commissioner Beatty. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Williams.
When, when it comes to the name, when, oh, I'm sorry. When it comes to the numbers, I'm going to trust Mayor Rile and Don Hall. They've done a good job for the last thirteen whatever years. And if he tells us this is direction we're going to go, I'm going to follow him on, on the money and figures. I don't follow him on everything. But when it comes to fault, numbers and figures, I'm going to follow whatever the mayor's suggestion is.
Commissioner Williams.
I was like, well, it's Dr. Weeks. So this is tonight's the first I've heard of the thirty-eight. Is that the new estimate for the? So I guess the last time.
Dude, there, there was. There were some changes proposed by the board to Hewlett Spencer. And which did certainly increase that. And of course, it's, you know. Construction costs continue to go up. So they've told us, you know. Every month, I, I think they gave us a number about one-point-three percent expected increases for the foreseeable future of one-point-three percent. For any increases coming forward. So.
So that project, so I guess you're saying that project now is estimated at thirty-eight million?
There were, there was a range between, I think the low range. Probably thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four. The high was thirty-eight, I think.
Okay, sir. Okay, I didn't.
Again, those are just budget numbers.
Okay. I guess I got one more legal, I guess a legal question. So. We're talking about the bidding process and I know in the past I've done these guaranteed maximum price and I think, you know, a lot of people don't understand this.
Right.
And. But I guess is it possible that the commission, if they approve this funding, can tie. The school board's hands to publicly bid this competitively instead of negotiate a guaranteed maximum price? Is that even legal?
Yeah. So I think what you, once you approve the money for them. Then they're in charge of the process that they follow. If, if what you want is to have control over that part. Then you don't approve the funding until they go through that process and they come back to you with the result. Okay. I mean, that's the control that the commission would have.
Okay. So they would. From a technical standpoint, if we wanted this thing put out competitively bid. We would have to give them the authority, I guess, to, we'd have to give them the funds to be able to hire an architectural firm to do the plan specifications and put it out for bid and then bring the bid back to us.
Correct.
For approval. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a quick question. Um, I know Commissioner Beatty was bringing up the roof, but is it my understanding that. Um, there have been engineers looking at the roof and there have been. Steps made to see about getting that fixed. It's not like it's just been sitting there doing nothing.
Yes, I am sorry. Uh, last, uh, we have documents all the way back to. Say last fall, so September, October, November last year where, uh. Same discussion was held in the board, um, whether this was a roof leak, whether it's, uh, penetration from that problem. There's. Been discussion of condensation between the, the roof and the roofing material. Again, I'm not a roofer. Uh, do have the engineering reports. If you'd like to see those, be glad to do that. Um. When the board last took the topic up, it was, I believe it was at the October twenty-two board meeting. And our roofing. Person that was there to, to discuss the roof with them, uh, said this is a massive project. It's going to have to be done in a summer. And so there was, there was discussion about, do we need to bid it at that point in time? And he discouraged that because of, again, we're talking about the cost of items going up. Uh, then I think supply chain was still a big issue. Getting the materials to actually roof it. And so, uh, the suggestion was made at that point in time and, uh, there was a recommendation made that that be bid this October. For summer twenty-four work. And so that's, that bid is being, the bid documents are being prepared as we speak. Going out, the board should see those at their November meeting, which is, I think, like the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of November. But again, that's going to be for a summer repair on that project. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Beatty.
Just quick question. Have we, has our maintenance people done anything to try to patch that at all, to keep that from leaking at all?
I can't answer that without speaking with them. I, I, I would anticipate so, yes, sir. But. You know, again, I think there's a lot of discussion. Is that coming? In from the outside or is that? Hot and cold pipes running through there? Is that?
Do you think it's condensation?
Um, I've read the reports. It's.
Do, do you think it's condensation? You think the roof is leaking? You, you ain't a, you ain't a dumb man, uh, Dr. Weeks.
Thank you, sir. Um, it, it is, it, it does coincidentally happen.
When you're training.
It's raining. Yes.
Uh-uh.
Commissioner Simmons.
You know, I think there's a lot of things that's, that's taken a play in what we're, a decision tonight. Uh. I know, Dr. Weeks, you've made a comment a time or two in, in the school board meetings and once here is it, how good our economy is. Well, I don't, I don't look at it like that. Uh, the reason. Your fund balance has increased is because the cost of goods have inflated from eighteen to twenty-five percent on any item you go to buy. And then you multiply that by the same factor and that's the reason the. Money is, 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 is better in the, than a. Balance is where it is my theory on that. And now just like the mayor saying, our interest rates are. Are going up. I mean, that's. That's a major factor on bar money and. I have people. Tell me, says, well, if a school board is sitting on thirty, thirty, thirty-five million dollars, what are we doing? Borrowing thirty or thirty-five million dollars? And I explained to them, I mean, you've got. You've got your costs, you know, every month, you know, just, just for instance, how much is, is just a payroll? Just a rough estimate of your payroll.
Probably three to five million dollars.
So that's, you know, you just, I don't take long. You can add, add numbers up on your hands, you know? And I try to explain to people that, that factor and I. And I tried to explain to people that that factor, and I can remember ye- years ago when the school, I think at the time, I made the the director at that time made a comment. He was down to like sixty days of of having funds. And that was, that was before your time, Mayor, but uh, I mean, it was, it's it's been pretty bleak out there. And now, you know, you you're looking at some, I would say, good times, but better times, and yeah, and it's all due to it's a lot of things come in the road. That's management is you is your biggest thing in any business, and I consider this a business, you know, it's how good the manager is. But it's hard, it's hard to make this average taxpayer understand, you know, when you got that much money. Why are we borrowing money? And that's, that's, that is a question. It's hard to answer.
Yes, sir. And and I, you know, I I go back and one of the documents you have is a historical historical fund balances, and you see, again, going back to um the the first year that I did a budget, it was eight million dollars. That 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 troubled me a lot. Yes, well, I'm I'm glad I never saw that. Um, I I will say, I I I do think you know, I think anytime you develop a a budget, it's a plan. You know, we have our own personal budgets, we have our work budgets, our departmental budgets, whatever that is, it's plan on how you spend money and and uh uh, I think the mayor and I think a lot alike as we budget. Uh, I think we budget very conservatively on revenues and maybe a little high on expenditures, because again, you 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 never know what you know, there might be a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar air conditioner unit, you know, a big cooling tower, something to break tonight. And um, we do, you know, we're going to have to to take that money out of fund balance to spend on. But again, I I think that's, I think we budget conservatively, and because of that, um I will say some of the federal dollars that have flowed to Dixon County are reflected in the the thirty. I think we're using thirty three, thirty three million dollar fund balance now, and I think there are some some federal dollars that are accounted for in there that we've not had to spend out of our regular budgets, and we've had those conversations with you before as well. Uh but yes, I I it's funny, I think, Mayor, you said you came up with thirteen million you'd feel comfortable with. I think I told the school board I'd feel comfortable with eighteen. So I'll split the difference between those, you know, maybe maybe fifteen. Uh, but I I I I do think it's I think the economy has been good to us. I think the extra dollars have been beneficial for Dixon County. But I'm also going to go back and say, uh, our department heads have done a good job of watching where they spend the money and and I you know, I wish Ms. Frazier was here tonight, but Lynn and I meet almost every other week to, uh, you see our financial reports once a quarter. We meet every other week to see where we are, where we stand, we need to slow down on this, you know, this is okay. So it's it's you know, when you say management, yes, sir, I I I think we've done a good job of managing those dollars as well.
Dr. Weeks, all due respect, you're going to be gone in a month. So the only management we can depend on right now is Mayor Ryle and Mr. Hall, because we don't know what the school board's fixing to do. So I guess my question can be directed to Mayor is how do we need to go along with this discussion? Do we need to to adapt your numbers or discuss your numbers or how we want to go forward with the school board?
Well, I I, again, the motion on the floor is to defer this to our November twentieth meeting. I think that'd give certainly myself and Mr. Hall an opportunity to delve down in these, but uh, again, you know, we talk like the school board's not here, but we we see half of them here, and we appreciate y'all being here tonight. Probably having some conversations with the school board to get clarity on what they've heard from y'all tonight and where we need to head, and we can do that over the next thirty days. So I'm in favor, not that I have a vote, but I'm in favor of your motion and your second to move this down to November twentieth. Any questions on the motion, Lynn? Question called for, no objection. Hearing no objection. All in favor, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is uh I'll have mine in order. It's a budget amendment archives shelving, uh, Mr. Hall.
Good job. Yeah, I handed out a sheet tonight, says archives at the top of it. This is regarding the reserve money we have for archives. The spreadsheet that you had have shows an amendment for furniture and fixtures, reserves, shelving. This here is for Dixon Off Supply. We discussed two weeks ago also. I just went ahead and made this three hundred and seven thousand even. And that's that's reserve money as of July first twenty twenty three. That's for the fiscal year we're in right now.
Okay, I I'm I'm lost. I'm out of order here. So we're on archive shelving.
Archive shelving, and we needed a budget amendment to cover that.
All right, that's coming out of reserve account of archives, so it's not coming out of general fund budget.
It's in the general fund budget, but it's archives.
But it's.
Fifty one nine one oh seven eleven.
All right, thank you. Open the floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner McIlwain, second by Commissioner Brett. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next is a resolution authorized county entered or contract the better business solutions for lease of copies, Mr. Hall.
That's right. Uh, we're making a recommendation tonight for uh better business uh solutions, BBE they go by. Uh, they can ended up being the better price for codes and archives, seventy four dollars and sixty nine cents for codes and seventy dollars and forty five cents for archives for sixty months. Lease.
Open the floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Ledger, second by Commissioner Gray.
I believe you have a resolution on your desk for this or had one sent to you.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Or the uh
Next is a resolution authorized execution of a sixty month lease contract with Pitney Bowes for postage meters related to services.
That's right, yeah. Pitney Bowes, it they uh they were one of two, Quadient was the other. Pitney Bowes is uh roughly seven dollars better, sixty months also, a lease.
Open the floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner McIlwain. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Think you're done, Mr. Hall. Oh, he does. Oh, he does. You do have one more. Next uh item is a resolution set speed limit on Covington Lane. That was agreed by to be thirty miles an hour. Is that your motion, Commissioner Ledger? Do you have a second? Second by Commissioner Buckner. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number se- seven is sheriff uh office salary agreement. Mr. Hall's got that one.
Yeah, this basically here is just some state uh money we we're receiving now for SROs. I've given you two sheets on this. They're stapled. Hand it them out tonight to you. It's uh six hundred fifty thousand dollars coming in from the state. That's your first sheet. Second sheet, we put it in salary supplements until we decide exactly where it goes. With a little bit of history this year, four or five months down the road, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We think it's going to benefit the sheriff and jail side. So as we go through this year, probably about April or so, we'll the sheriff will give you that out to uh his line items, such as deputies or that type thing, investigators, jailers, that type thing.
Open the floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Foster.
Can I ask a question on that? How how sure are we guaranteed this money is to come in every year?
That might be the sheriff.
Commissioner Bro, the states made a a pretty solid commitment to have this as a reoccurring funding due to the nature uh some uh some counties not having done it. But they didn't penalize us, Dixon County, of being one of the four counties and having a SRO in every school from elementary to high school. And so I think it'd be political suicide, suicide for the representatives. I I've talked, I've talked to a couple of them. They're like, this is a solid thing. They're just, they they've made a commitment to funding it every year, but of course, now they've got some, some places across the state are not taking that money. I think that's not good, but if they're not taking it, that just rather reassures that state will be there to fund this SRO program.
Yeah, the other thing I I'm I'm nervous about is just to make sure that they're going to fund it long enough. Not pull it, then all of a sudden it's a reoccurring expense that we're going to have to come up with, and the deputies not get a raise for a year or two, then they're mad at us, you know?
Now, I I understand that, that that's valid, that's valid concern. And we could make those adjustments if if state pulled the funding, but this will be a great help with us, because salaries and law enforcement are going crazy all the way around us and uh this will help. It it won't fix it perfect, but it it will certainly help uh greatly.
That's a good thing. The state legislators are late every two years, so keep keep their phone number on speed dial. Yes, Commissioner Williams?
So, uh, did you say we are going to have an officer in every school?
Oh, we already do.
You already do?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
For several years.
And what about, was it the city of Dixon furnishing their officers for the city schools?
I believe the county was supplementing theirs a hundred and eighty days, and the city was picking up the difference.
Okay.
So what happens is just it cleaned it up. So they they applied, we assisted them, and they applied for the grant. So they they're just getting a direct deposit now instead of reimbursing from the county for the hundred and eighty day.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Is this going to be like in a form of a a raise per hour, not not like a bonus, like a raise?
It'll be, it'll effectively looking at a dollar an hour raise for the salary deputies. That includes corrections and patrol.
Any other questions, Sheriff Eads? We have a motion, a second. Hearing no other questions. All in favor, vote by saying stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Appreciate it.
Any other business to be brought before the commission by the members? Next item of business approval, another is Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Harris Ayer, Ray Clark, Mark Dahl, Cynthia Dawson, Ashley Gillette, William Hicks, Alex Kelly, Michelle Paragawa, Demetrius Ramey, Jennifer Rosario, Adriana Rosenbaum, Holly C, and Mary Stacy.
Entertaining a motion for approval. Thank Commissioner Beatty. Thank Commissioner Buckner. All in favor, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Announcements. There's got something going on. Okay. Oh. What time of day?
Seven o'clock in the morning, start serving, start shooting eight.
Sounds like a holiday meal at my house. Excellent. Any other announcements? Hearing none. The next regular session meeting will be on Monday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty three, at seven P M in the Beaufortale Vittery Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Court Square, South Tennessee, High Mission, Juror. Thanks.